How they're being in order to explain what he applied that's more.
I'm delighted to be by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under our individual liberty and justice law.
Scotty, can you over time to call this?
Um, council member Barrett, she's out in the house, got a tile as well. Dakman?
Here.
Kelly?
President.
Schroeder?
Here.
Seago?
President.
And American Zersky.
President.
Mayor, both council persons asked to be excused, stayed out of town and filed in Washington DC.
I need a motion to excuse.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is our setting of the agenda, Steve, do we have any changes?
There are no changes, Mayor.
Okay, we moved to five, the minutes from the August nineteenth regular meeting. If seen on page three to seven. So there any changes or? If not, you need a motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next item is we're accepting the public domain different committee and commission minutes. Pages eight to nine, need a motion to accept in the public domain.
Suboot.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comment? We got a public comment? Not the, next item is our recognition. Say, is Pat, uh?
He did not show. He wasn't, we invited him, he said he was coming, but he's not here.
Okay, well, if there's a catch till later in the, later in the program here. Uh, reports by chairpersons. Dale?
Good evening, everyone.
You look very dapper tonight.
I know, I was gonna say it today, that's all. The list of invoices for the month or before the council, mayor and members of council, they totaled five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the month. All routine purchases, there were a few that were a little bit out of the ordinary, altered collision, there was a repair to our uh, two thousand nineteen transit vehicle for twenty-four hundred, which the insurance company will reimburse. Our Tucker had replaced a fire hydrant within the community and do excavations on twenty-foot of conduit replacement on sprinkler lines for the city. Our typical Great Lakes uh, water bill was seventy-eight thousand dollars, a little higher than usual due to the uh, weather we've been having to dry summer. Uh, those are the key ones that stood out, if there's any questions that anyone has though.
I just have a comments. This was buried there when I had to watch.
Wow, that's a confident. Are there any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve this check register, Rob.
Suboot.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In my vote. Financial statements, uh?
On the financials, the uh, general fund, our principal fund where we pay for daily operations, public safety, public sanitation, recycling, so forth. Total revenues to date a million two. That's through August thirtieth, which is principally tax collections. Expenses nine forty-four through August thirtieth, the net two sixty to the good. Again, it's earlier in the year, we've only completed July and August, and many of the August bills are still coming in. I would note, while we've collected as of August thirtieth, a million two in taxes, five million have come in in the last thirty days, or in the last two weeks for September, with the due date of September fifteenth. So in total, your revenues uh, for the general fund are eighty percent of its funded through property tax revenues, of which you've collected ninety, ninety-five percent already. On the major and local street funds, no activity within the major street fund. Streets are classified as either major streets or minor streets, so there's two different funds, one to account for each. Uh, four hundred, uh, forty-one thousand dollars in revenue in a major street fund, which is gas tax revenue. And nothing spent of any note to date. Local street fund, eighteen thousand five hundred gas tax revenue. We did have seventy-five thousand dollars in expenditures for Hutch, uh, Payton, who's been doing work throughout the community in a variety of areas. I believe he's wrapping up. Uh, water and sewer fund, six hundred thousand in revenue, two hundred thousand in expenditures, but again, it's early in the year. And Marina Fund, really no activity, couple of boat well rental payments, collections. Over the year, I think all but six were rented. Oh, there were six remaining vacant, three of them were the large, I think fifty-plus footers. And that's it.
Um, Dale, when did the orders come, have they come already?
First week of October. They were here for interim work where they test the uh, procedures, cash receipts, procedure accounts payable, banking, investing, and so forth, so the routine tests they've done just to update their files, and then they'll come do the finished work. They scheduled it last spring for early October.
And they're able to do most of that, or some of it remotely, right?
Pretty much all of it. They like coming in. And last year, two years ago, I think they're in here for four people, four staff members for a week. Last year, I think it was down to three for two days and everything else was remote.
You know, last question I have is, what's, what's the due date for checks? One of my neighbors said, is it midnight at the box?
Uh, September fifteenth, but there's leeway on that, if someone drops it off sixteen, seventeen.
Drop it off at eleven-thirty, is that considered time?
And usually if someone's concerned about that, I think a quick call to Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Rob, too sure.
Should be in, it should be in the box. As long as we check the box, they, they can put it in the day of or a day late if we check the box. We don't know when it got put in there.
Okay.
Cause it was due on Sunday.
Right.
All day Monday before we check.
Okay, thanks, Steve, thanks, Steve.
Excuse my bad memory, I'm sure I've asked this before, but there, in the water fund and revenues, there's two hundred and forty thousand dollars uh, under miscellaneous as expected.
Well, the grant was received for lead line testing, that was the total grant revenue allocation in anticipation of two hundred and forty thousand expenses. As you spend the money, it's reimbursed, so once listed as a revenue, the other's an expense. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Dale? Not a good report, Dale.
Quick and easy.
Okay. Public safety, Ken?
Good evening. Looking at your big notebook. I do, I don't really have much to say, it's kind of like, yeah. Good evening, uh, I apologize for missing last month, a busy schedule. I see Mr. McCarron made it, so I'll make this really quick brief, help me out here a little bit. So it's the last time I was here, the most major event that we had was the house fire in nine seventy Lakeshore. Sure most of you heard about it, it was on a Sunday afternoon. At three thirty, so there was a lot of traffic, a lot of people were able to go up and see. The result of that fire was a response from Gross Point Roads, Harper Roads, and Gross Point Farms helped us assist in it. Unfortunately, um, the homeowner had to take a little responsibility doing some home repairs to mitigate his fire, but at the end of the day, uh, our department responded and we were catching it in a good time, it really could have went the other way, it really, uh, fire was already inside the attic, it was moving through the second wall. We didn't, not that we did a great job, but we did a very good job, and the result could have ended up a lot like thirty-six sitting down if we didn't get it done correctly, but seems to wrap itself up, we concluded our investigation, turned it over to our insurance company. Do you have any questions about that, I can answer them for you, it's pretty simple. And just the last item I have is uh, to remind everybody of our open house, uh, Sunday the twenty-eighth of this month, from twelve to three. urge you all to come by and that's gonna help me communicate to the community on that, so. Well, that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ken? Yeah, okay, thank you, Ken. Uh, at this point, I'd like to ask Pat, Pat, you wanna come on up?
Fire alert program today.
Pat, I wanna thank you, on behalf of the city, for, you've lived here thirty years, you've served over twenty years on the planning commission, you've been active in many city functions, we're gonna miss you, we're gonna miss you, your talent, that's why it makes this community very special. So, again, we have this, Bobic tile.
Oh, beautiful, great.
City hall for you to remember.
Well, thank you, it was, I had a great time serving, you know, you get more than, uh, out of it than uh, you realize, serving the community, um. I was on the charter commission, that was a very interesting time, and I don't know if you remember the old Detroit City Airport Study Committee? We did a lot of that work here uh, as well, so it was a privilege, Mary's a great chairperson, uh, so I know everything's in great shape and uh, into shorts.
But you had great talents to offer, being attorney, working for GM and, and specialist department, we really appreciate your talents for the city.
Well, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, you're good.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
And touch.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, wait, come back. Come back, sorry.
Thank you, Ken, Pat.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve. Different example of somebody in the community sharing their talents to make the city very special. Mike, public works?
Yeah, it's just a few items to update you on tonight. Uh, Kevin Hartman and our water and sewer department have been busy with sewer work over the past month, they were able to clean catch basins, as well as have several different areas cleaned and televised. Uh, Fred Lees and the Parks Department shut down the pool for the season. Our contractor will be out in the next two weeks to winterize the pool. We are looking at a possible partial filter media replacement over the winter for the main pools. Um, and I would also like to clean and televise the drainage system in and around the bathhouse, both for operational and for the new bathhouse, uh, in preparation for the new bathhouse. Um, Fred has shifted focus to repairs in the marina, he's been working uh, out there pretty much every day right now. Bruce Haynes has been on the streets uh, with a crew trimming and removing trees, concentrating on roadways and sidewalks as we always do before it starts to snow. I have, uh, neglected to tell you over the last few months that we had lost our DPW mechanic, um, he left us back on June thirtieth. We haven't operated without one since then, we haven't, we also been searching for one since, uh, before he left, and I am happy to report that we have found a great candidate that is scheduled to start on September twenty-ninth. It may have been interesting, maybe it was sometimes fun figuring out how to fix things over the last couple of months, but I'll be very happy to have a dedicated mechanic back in our shop. And uh, just to close out, as a reminder to everyone, the curbside leak pickup starts on October fourteenth, that is a shortened week because we are all closed on Monday for Columbus Day, but we will start that Tuesday with curbside leak pickup. That's all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mike? How long does the curbside last?
Oh, there's a closing date, it's on the calendar. We're on the spot. This, I think it's a, first Friday in December might be our last day, I think it's normally the first Friday in December, yeah.
Like the area in the pool, the pumping station where that break occurred?
Yep.
Is that being enclosed or case?
Um, I haven't decided yet.
There's no cement on the top.
It's just uh, crushed concrete, it's leveled off with crushed concrete, so it's filled up with stones, so we can work on it, we can do stuff on it. I haven't decided yet whether we cap that with concrete or not, or just leave it open until, cause i- if we get a new uh, pool and bathhouse, that whole floor is coming out anyways. Uh, so I'm gonna just keep it open in case there's an issue in the future, we might have to get back in that hole, it'll be much easier if it's not.
Oh, that was great, great work on to get the pool.
We asked the inspector if there's any issue, county inspector that came, uh, yearly, we asked if there was any issue, he had no issues with that, staying that way for now, so it's just an aesthetic issue right now.
Sounds good.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you. Um, guard committee?
Uh, if I isn't here, I don't see Jen here either. So we did meet today at four o'clock and discussed a number of issues, but we started with peace navigation, which is, I think, very well this year, I think you found that the pier has been uh, pretty clean and the park itself is, has uh, had a posse, at least of uh, of who species, which has been wonderful, so efforts will keep up with that uh, until I leave uh, mid-October when Fran Bachman and Tracy will be leaving us until October. So uh, we've been happy with that. Um, the concession stand, so we had hoped to have extended hours uh, this year with it, it didn't come to fruition, so we're gonna be getting on that early for next year, uh, working the full circle, either them doing it by themselves or with some supplementation help, so hopefully we'll have expanded services for the concession stand by the pool uh, next year. Um, there was concern about the need for some security in the pier, and uh, Mike Way's looked into the cost of a uh, blink system, camera system to surveillance on the pier, the cost of that would be about a thousand dollars, and uh, I think we'll probably end up proceeding with that. Also, the fishing area, we have some new signage coming in the late fall or early spring, which will designate clearly the areas that are no fishing zones, which are really the rocky areas uh, next to overlooks, but the entire pier will be a, a fishing zone, but that'll be closed spelled out, obviously no fishing in the harbor. Um, also, we talked further about having a, a safety rail on the pier, especially the narrow portion of the pier, wouldn't extend the entire portion of the pier, but up to that narrow portion for safety, uh, helps with ADA as well, and uh, right now, um, Mike Way's working on some wooden posts for that, with probably some rope to make a safety railing for that uh, in the future. And then finally, uh, some court news, um, we discussed the, the, ten, ten courts two and four have gates to the outside. And often times when playing with people, they'll hit balls on the fence, sometimes I hit them over the fence, and they have to move all the way around and you adjust by then to get back, so since it was locked because the north gate in the past was unlocked, allow people to, potentially to have egress or ingress through that area. So now that the north gate is locked, uh, we're going to remove the locks from the uh, courts two and four to allow people who can't control the balls to get easily access to them. Uh, we also discussed um, the dual-purpose pickleball tennis court. For the future, there's been a big upsurge in interest in pickleball, a little bit of downside for tennis, we have four tennis courts and two pickleball courts. So we discussed the bill, the possibility of, um, instead of taking, which we do temporarily for the pickleball tournaments this year, uh, having extra lines painted on at least one of the tennis courts to allow for two more pickleball courts or tennis, it can be dual-purpose, because the nets are mobile, uh, to allow for some versatility and usage for pickleball and tennis in the future. And uh, finally, we have the century tournament this last weekend for pickleball, which means, of course, that both members have to be at least one hundred years old. Uh, I see someone here present who was on that, and in fact, uh, Rob won third place at the pickleball tournament. Pickles did very well, ten pickles. Um, Alex Di Petro and uh, Fred, uh, excuse me, Frank, uh, Pizzolato, again, Alex Di Petro and Frank Pizzolato, uh, won first place, and the most amazing thing I thought was that the three oldest teams won first, second, and third place, beating out the youngers, which was which is great in this tournament, so, gold age. Um, that's all I have for my report.
Very important, any questions for Josh?
Oh, our next meeting will be November eighteenth, which will be in this room at five p.m.
Okay, good. Harbor committee, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Dan is not here. Uh, anyway, he is uh, working on a date for a harbor committee meeting, uh, probably within the next month, agent time, it's still in. Still have great weather, get out there, get on your boat, use the harbor, use the park. So, before you go out, some, those are icy, but beautiful out there, but stay. Make sure you come in the harbor, let's both save me, yeah, please.
So, John, with the vacant wells, cost us about fifteen thousand dollars, you figure, we have the three largest ones, the fifty footers? I said, rocks, the opportunity cost of the money we lost, about fifteen thousand?
From that neighborhood, yes.
Okay. Well, there's nothing we can do, I mean, I, those are the big ones, so. Hard to lease. Good. Good, uh, tree board committee?
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor. My glasses aren't here. It's been getting a little bit older, can't go anywhere without glasses now. Uh, it's been quite some time since I made a report regarding the tree board, the council, please excuse my absence. As you're aware, the tree board was created almost twenty-three years ago. The requirement for gross point shores to go far in the national group known as Tree City USA. We are just one of three thousand communities across the nation that are committed to maintaining the growth and diversity of our tree population. Diversity is the key. Asspannies of one species known as monocultures must be avoided at all costs. Loss of our elm, ash, and now pear trees show proof of that. I'm confident in saying that pears are in danger of dying off from a foliar disease called pear exosperm, very prevalent throughout the shores. Now for some good news, the tree board has a part in our mission, the tree committee from the Gross Point Shores Improvement Foundation. Foundation has supported the planting of nearly one thousand trees since its inception in nineteen eighty-four. One thousand trees, quite a few. Ability to apply for reforestation grants that are available from companies like DTE and the Opera Day Settlement are more benefits than membership that Tree City status provides. Currently, the tree board and improvement foundation are working together to save the nearly ten normal spruce located across the street in the parking lot of O.C.'s Park. Car bumpers, snowplows, dripping automobile coolant, and physical signs are becoming a problem for the parking lot. The guards are also concerned they can't see through the spruce trees and the firs and see the other side of the parking lot and anybody in the cars. We are looking at the possibility of transplanting it to the southeast corner of the, of the park to screen the gross point, like the dumpsters and outdoor storage area. Working with Mike Way, we have discovered not only a two-twenty bolt line, but a three-inch gas line directly underneath them. I'm very glad I called Mike again. Other topics of our, of our meetings include our tree trimming and removal program, resident concerns and complaints, and ordinance violations and reviews. And we meet quarterly every first month, the second Tuesday first month, at seven-thirty, bright early in the morning, you're all welcome to join us anytime. Other than that, that's all I have, if anyone has any questions regarding, what's going on with your trees?
Brett, do you still have that big binder, that black binder?
It's been, I got two of them now.
Okay.
It's growing.
How many trees are in the city?
There are, there are, there are, there's probably three thousand or so.
Three thousand.
They were taken a couple on it.
On city property or city needs?
City-owned trees. Public trees.
Are there any questions for Brett?
I do, and then you or Mike can help me out, you had mentioned last meeting, Rick, where, that you were taking down, I guess, diseased pear trees, several of them, and I have seen eight empty swat of places that had trees, and there was just nothing, are there any plans?
I'll put you on this for this fall, I'll come see you.
Okay. Okay, I think Valentine or by Barnes, it's just that quarter, we did some.
Oh, they took out three of those trees.
It's just, yeah, it's just, it's strange looking. But, okay, that was the question, so then that would be something that we would talk to you, talk about Brett.
Yeah, you can call, sure.
Anybody in the community that's listening, you know, if they want to, a tree revised.
I, I refer all requests for city trees to Brett.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, cause he'll review and give them options.
It's not my home, so the homeowners have, it's, it's just a thought, so.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Brett, thanks for volunteering.
Absolutely.
Uh, infrastructure?
Yeah, we probably have eight for the playoffs next year. Um, just reporting that the roadwork is continuing on, currently on Moreland, Weber, Fairford, and North and South East Flats. It's continuing right now, so Dale said we haven't spent any money, but those are coming short. Uh, we started, uh, we also started prep work, uh, uh, for the study of the Sunningdale Sewer Project. So we're doing some of the prepping on that right now to review those issues, and also, we are looking at the necessary improvements to the south coast. Engineers.
Okay.
Complete this report.
Improvement Foundation, Rob? Got an exciting event coming up.
Oh, we do, we do, we always have some good news, you know, nice thing about the foundation. So, uh, good evening, Mayor, council members. Appreciate you having me here, um, we had our foundation trustee meeting uh, last evening, covered a lot of underground, it was a, it was a good meeting, the, the foundation is financially sound, we reached got a, a lifetime donation, that's five thousand dollars from somebody, which is really nice, shocking, yeah. And between now and the end of the year, you know, we'll have a newsletter that goes out and that usually highlights everything and uh, gets, gets people out around, before tax time, writing checks, and we'll be, you know, looking for donations around that time. Um, if you've been up and down Lakeshore, you've seen the uh, the seascapes, uh, the job has been completed, you know, over like thirteen hundred new plants are in there, everything's uh, renovated, the uh, the plaques that were in there, the original dedications from way back are updated and are installed, the sprinkler system, you know, is in there watering things and it's great. Um, we just uh, um, released a uh, a, a contract for maintenance, so uh, you know, these things are gonna be uh, uh, taken care of, going forward, and that's all uh, by the foundation. Um, we have thirty-one trustees right now, we have an ability to have up to forty-two trustees, so there's spots for eleven more. So if you um, know of people who are interested and wanna be a trustee and, and come help in uh, some of the most fun work in the community, uh, spread the word, and have them get ahold of us. And of course, the twenty-fifth of September, it's a week from Thursday, is the uh, the Oktoberfest, it's over at Lockmore Club, and this is a Heidi and Fran show special, it's, it's gonna be a blast. Hundred and sixty-two spots and uh, it's about sold out as far as tickets, and uh, but she says, don't tell anybody that, as well, get them in. You know, more chairs, more tables, so, uh, you know, hopefully you have your ticket, and if not, they're still available, and uh, the uh, three-two-one raffle they call it, those tickets are available, a hundred dollars a piece, and uh, I'd say that half, over half are already sold before the event, we'll sell some at the event, that sort of thing, but uh, that's kind of fun, and there'll be a lot of exciting things as well as uh, German hors d'oeuvres and uh, you know, a very nice sit-down plated meal, uh, sort of thing, uh, beer sampling of all, of all types, it's it's gonna be a lot of fun, and they always have some uh, some surprises, uh, so, uh, be ready, ready for that. Our next meeting is the seventeenth of November, and uh, so a trustee meeting, and uh, as a, as a close, I'd like to really express appreciation to Don and, and, and what he does as far as putting these pickleball tournaments together, both of them. I participated, they're a lot of fun, um, good competition, and uh, um, it was great, halfway through, we got rained out, um, which was surprising, there was no forecast for rain, very surprising, but it was still an absolute pleasure, nice people, a lot of fun, very well organized, and I got a bottle of pickles. So, good night.
Congratulations, Rob.
Okay.
Any questions for Rob? Uh, who got the uh, maintenance contract, you know, for the seastream?
Kokomanino.
They did the installation, I think?
They did the installation, and they also are warranting all the plants for a year.
Well.
So to put that contract on, so, you know, it makes sense.
Okay. Thanks, Rob, okay. Communications?
It's rare to go here. A good evening and uh, several mayor and city council, and welcome, Courtney, good to have you here in a smiling face. Uh, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, so, we had another busy meeting in communications, uh, century pickleball tournament, uh, was on Saturday. A chess tournament was on Sunday, and then um, on Sunday morning, I had the honor and pleasure to interview these smiling faces that you see on the screen. So if you don't know who they are, this is Jason and Sarah Greenhill and their son, Henry. If you don't know who they are, you will on October first. On October first, our newsletter comes out, and there'll be this story about them and their challenge. They lived in the house on Sunningdale that burned down, there was an explosion around ten AM in the morning, and their house blew up. Fire, faulty gas meter. Uh, they couldn't put out the gas, company couldn't turn off the gas, so they spent eight hours, eight hours in front of their house, watching it burn, and all their possessions, all their clothes, all their furnishings, everything they have in life. Out of that story in the interview, we had tissues, and we were all crying, all of us. There are some rising from the ashes. So Sergeant Jason Cook of our police department was one of the first to notice, and he asked the Greenhills, was there anyone in the house? And they said, no people, this is our guinea pig, he asked where the location was, he ran into this burning house on fire after an explosion, and saved and rescued their guinea pig, three stuffed animals for Henry, and got out of there before any damage to him. He risked his life, that's the kind of people we have working here in Gross Point Shores. That's the kind of people we have working here in Gross Point Shores. Another miracle, the neighbors who were out and about watching this fire. Not to spectate, not with their phones and recording it, putting on social media, not a single person recorded this on their phones. Because they know the family was out there. And the sensitivity of their neighbors to put their phones down and to comfort. And they kept asking them, what do you need? What do you need? And they could barely breathe. They couldn't tell them what they need. So they went out and got everything that they needed. Clothes, toothbrushes, toothpaste. Everything. A neighbor down the street, uh, ten houses away, gave them the keys to their house. And we all know that fish and guests rot after three days. They lived there six weeks in their house. This story just keeps going on and on and on. It's an incredible story. Um, and and the reason I'm doing this and dedicating this because this is such an incredible story with lessons learned. So I'm going to explain what those lessons learned are. So we can all, um, benefit from this. I met the Greenhills at the swim finals. They were contemplating writing a book about their, um, experience. They didn't know how to get started. They didn't know where to go. They saw me and as many people in Gross Point Shores know who I am. They, uh, were quick to tell me who they were and their story. They started telling it in the hopes that I might fight, and I did. And I said, this could be a great short spotlight. And so. I was really moved and I've never dedicated one of these presentations to just a short spotlight, but this requires some, um, explanation and some highlight. Of of all the things that went on with our community, how wonderful it is, how they came together with gift cards and toys for the boy. Um, Sergeant Cook running to home to grab things. Um, it's just amazing. So when you see this. That's not gonna happen to me. Right? My house is never gonna burn. And for the most part, your house is probably not gonna burn, but it does happen. And he talked about an earlier fire. This is the second fire. Fires happen. Okay, so this is what it looks like inside your home when there's a fire. That's inside their home. This is could be you. I never thought I'd have a child with special needs, yet here I stand today with a twenty-four-year-old with special needs. Life happens. These things happen. There's nothing really to salvage in this home. Uh, just completely gutted, completely devastated. They had, uh, five feet of water in the basement from the firefighters. The firefighters could not get out that fire as the gas kept going. They could not turn out that gas. So here is Panda, the guinea pig, alive and well today. Uh, and so thanks to Sergeant Jason Cook. And this is the family's happy and smiling. They're living in St. Clair Shores on the lake and they're loving it. Yet they feel like they're cheating on their house by enjoying their new rental house on Lake St. Clair. All right, these are the three stuffed animals that were rescued. Uh, underneath which you can't see, there are burn marks on those, so they have character. But the the smoke has been removed from frequent cleaning. And there's Henry. He's enjoying. These are actually his three favorite animals out of dozens and dozens that he had. All right, so this is their view from their house. So they got a great view of the lake. And, uh, they're currently enjoying it. Uh, one thing that was interesting is this is a very private family. And so accepting help from others was extremely difficult, but they made a decision that night of the fire to. Allow themselves to accept the generosity of our community. And, uh, the outpouring of love and support was just overwhelming to them. Even today, they cry and they tear up thinking about how wonderful our community is. Great family. They get around town. They have a great time, um, covering, you know, going out and about and having fun in our community. Um, very spiritual people. They go to church every week. And this is what it looks like today. So it is, um, fenced in and, uh, pretty. In pretty bad shape. From the story, which will be published on October first, they have some lessons for all of us. And this is the most important part that they wanted to communicate to all of us. And why they want this story to be known, even though they're very private. So here are the couple lessons learned. Protect what matters most. Keep receipts of all your furnishings and all your belongings in a fireproof safe. If you don't have them in a fireproof safe, you should. You're gonna need them if this ever, thank God, this never happens to you, if this ever happens. Take photos of everything in your house for insurance purposes. Accept help. Community is a gift. Accept it, embrace it when it comes around. Hold on to faith in tragedy. Small miracles and reminders are of hope are everywhere. And choose resilience. Choose resilience. You cannot control what happens, but you control how you respond to it. So, uh, with that, um, it is funny to say that we have one news. You have a story coming up in the Shores Newsletter, it very moving and, uh. Just this wonderful family, uh, been through unspeakable tragedy. Um, with all of their belongings gone and ours. So, um. Several reasons I brought it up, just to underline how terrific our community is, the outpouring of love and support. Um, one of the things they mentioned is, uh, this is like a funeral in some ways. You have the funeral and then you have people hugging you and kissing you at the funeral. And then everyone goes away and goes to their regular lives and you're left with the devastation for whatever loved one that you lost. But that never happened. People kept pouring love and tension and hugs and gift cards, food, so much food that they had to turn it away. Uh, so this community kept, um, pouring out all the love and and, uh, support for for months after this. Uh, this was March twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-five, and they're still, uh, supporting them and, uh. They are gonna rebuild, uh, because of the love of the community. They they waited whether or not they wanted to come back. Uh, and they decided to come back. It's gonna be about two years before that house is torn down and rebuilt, but they're gonna do that. And they really just want to thank our community and, uh, and appreciate all the good wishes and support and love they show. Mayor, that is a very moving presentation.
I'm speechless. I mean, you've had some great spotlights, uh, because it's a very special community, but. Not one like this, not one with this. This movie and the story and and again, the love in the community and how people, you know, wrap their arms around them and, you know. There was a a story, a fire that happened a few years ago and I remember, I think it was on Lake Shore. And one of our neighbors, um, when the house burned down, it's Ron Wayne herself. When it burned down, he moved in with one of the neighbors. The family moved in. So your three days for fish or for guests, I mean, doesn't apply to Gross Point.
No, it does not.
This is the makings of a movie. And it's it's like, uh, boy, and I could just tell how it impacted you. And like you said, the fact nobody had their cell phone. They were just speechless.
Well, it was incredible. The the husband, uh, was at work and he heard the ring camera, we have ring cameras. And he heard it on his office computer go off and he heard bang, bang, bang. And there was a gas company employee knocking on the door. And then he heard him say, uh, we have an explosion. We have a fire. Can you imagine? You're at work and you hear that and that's your home, your explosion and your fire. That's how shocked he just could be. He heard it.
And apparently it was an unprotected gas line, so.
But the gas meter that was faulty. The meter was faulty. The gas company was there. They smoked gas in the morning. They took off to their, uh, work and things, uh, school. And, uh, gas company employees were there trying to fix the meter. Boom, exploded and.
And flames went to the top of the house.
They saw the flames from half a mile away. Yeah, smoke, bellowing was. It's as tragic and as horrible as you can possibly imagine driving home in the middle of your morning and you're supposed to be at work and you're seeing this devastating effect.
Wow.
It's just a lesson for all of us. We can learn a lot from it. They want us to learn from their, um, tragedy of what to do to protect our own house and our own lives.
Yeah, nothing they could they could have done would have prevented. So.
Yeah.
Other questions? Danielle, do you want to add anything? Like I said, this was very moving, very, I can see where everybody that was there was teared up again. Very supportive of this family.
How many communities would not take out their cell phone, one person at least, take out their cell phone and start recording it? It's in today's social media world. And none, no one did. There's not a single recording of that anywhere on the internet.
And the respect for the families.
Respect for families.
We're powerful, love to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we go to you, Brian.
Gus, thanks for being here. Uh, this past month, it's kind of a sorry narrative because we have legal front. There's lots going on in the world, but we won't talk about that tonight. Um. We consulted with the city regarding O C's part of Bulstah Police Matters. Uh, I reviewed some of the historical documents relating to Bulstah Police's at the bottom land frontal contracts. Uh, Tom Kralcheck gifted me three gigantic vanilla extended quarters of documents that I probably summed up. There's more to be considered. Uh, and the idea there is to consider whether. If there's going to be any contract amendments needed under the city manager, probably about that, uh, I don't know about myself. Uh, but that is, that might took up a chunk of our time. We also consulted with the city regarding the status of the city's communications, uh, resident in response to a, uh. Foyer request, the Freedom Information Act request. Uh, that never seemed to go away and I think it's finally gone away. It's not gotten weirder. But, uh, we we, uh, had a little bit of discussion about that. Uh, we also consulted with the city as usual regarding how the administration of procedural matters that are resigned on a day-to-day basis. So that's pretty well into the line. I'm happy to answer any questions that may come on the.
Does anybody have any questions for Brett? Okay, good report, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Banter's report, Steve.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just very brief tonight. I just wanted to mention, Mike talked about the mechanic. I. I thought we, I didn't want to recognize Mike and his staff because we've been a couple of months without a mechanic, which has not been easy. Mike is in the back changing oil one day in the morning when the police car has been in oil change. So everybody was pitching in. He had some other guys that have some mechanical skills. We did send some things out for, you know, they had to be contracted out to get some of the work done on some of the trucks, but. For majority, he's really survived by a bunch of group efforts. So I just wanted to commend Mike for that. Did also want to mention that, uh, we've been talking about the seawall project of, uh. Ourselves and the farms will be hosting a host of people, uh, in the first week in October. Uh, we will have our federal partners from the EPA here. We'll have our state partners from Eagle, our regional partners, partners from, uh, GLC and the Great Lakes Commission. Along with our engineers and some others to take a walk, uh, from the farms to the shores on some of the seawall issues. Uh, since we did receive a significant grant for a study. And as I said, for the grant, uh, for the study, uh, will lead into they're expecting that if they give us. They did give us and since they gave us that grant, they would go further, uh, with more money down the road to move more, uh, repairs to this.
Especially just.
Yes, I think so. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Any questions for Steve? Okay, uh, old business, non-new business, swearing in of our city clerk. Courtney. The job of city clerk has evolved over the years and it involves now, uh, to be dealing with state law, federal law, election law. So it really has, really has changed and Bruce Nichols for the last fourteen years was our volunteer, as we all know, and. Um, but now Courtney's got the proper accreditations and certification to be our full-time city clerk. So. Raise your right hand, Courtney. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution.
I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I'll faithfully discharge my duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge my duties.
As village of Gross Point Shores.
As village of Gross Point Shores.
City clerk.
City clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Thank you, Courtney.
Do you want to introduce who was here with you tonight?
My father-in-law, Bill Dalbridge, and my husband, Kevin Spender.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. It's just working out just perfectly, you know, salary, job titles are expanding by the year, right, Courtney? You know, harbor master and handle so many different functions, building inspector and. I mean, I'm missing a few of the other, but even on the harbor master, just overseeing the people that are paying and making sure that, uh. Those go out and timely and and follow up with the people and. You know, she's been part of the complaint department. The people complain to her, right? So. Well, welcome aboard, Courtney.
Thank you.
Okay, Department of Public Works purchase pages thirty-three to thirty-five. Mike?
Yes, the Department of Public Works has requested the purchase of a new J C B three C X compact backhoe loader. I know that's a lot. Uh, this loader is an integral part of our water and sewer department. The new J C B loader will replace two tractors that we have, one J C B, uh, loader and one new Holland backhoe. Both, uh, were built in nineteen ninety-nine and are well beyond their intended service life. Um, I only got one bid for this tractor because A I S is the exclusive J C B dealer in Michigan. Um, this loader is unique and its size and capabilities perfectly fit for our department. Um, it has four-wheel steering, steering, which a lot of tractors don't have, so we can maneuver it in and out a lot easier. Uh, again, it comes with a backhoe, so we're actually getting a two-for-one here on this tractor. Um, that's a great fit for our department. The cost from A I S construction equipment is a hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. That includes the trade-in value for both tractors, one for ten thousand and one for eight thousand. Do you have any questions?
Specifically what jobs you run up. This particular vehicle.
So the backhoe is used almost exclusively in the water department to dig stop boxes, uh, both for fire hydrants or our houses. Um, digging and finding mines. Uh, the loader part, we can load any kind of bulk material. Um. We used to use our old one to to tow the, uh, leaf fax, but we started using pickups when I took over, so I don't use it for that anymore. Um, loader and excavation jobs that we have all over town, whether it's, um, fixing grounds after a water main break or anything like that.
Was it made in the United States and not subject to tariffs?
They are. J C B is a British company, but these are made, uh, in a southern state, I believe, North Carolina or South Carolina.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Is this something that's used weekly?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, like I said, it's 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 a two-for-one deal, so we'll probably use it more than the current one that we have now.
And this was on our list of, you know, we have a master list that's on there. I've got a picture of it.
Oh, oh, wow, look at it. Yeah. You could even drive it, so. I'm not sure about that. Okay. Well, I need a motion to approve. For a price not to exceed a hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred.
Sumut.
Seven. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Mike.
As a side note, this price is for the one that they have in stock, so I could literally have a body on the week. A lot of equipment out base takes anywhere from six to twelve months as we know at at a minimum to get. So. This is, uh, one piece of equipment I'm excited to get as soon as possible.
Okay, good. Thanks, Mike. Now the next item is the underground storage tank and fuel master installation.
Yes, sir. Um, the Department of Public Works is proposing to replace our eight thousand, uh, gallon underground fuel storage tanks. Uh, with two one-thousand gallon above-ground tanks. The existing tank was installed in nineteen ninety-one and is well beyond its life cycle. Uh, the smaller and above-ground tanks also have much less required compliance. Um, they will be placed in the same. Um, they will be placed in the same location as our underground tanks, which is right here in the DPW yard. They'll just be above ground. Um, once tanks turn thirty years old, um, they get hard to ensure, and ours is definitely getting harder and harder to ensure. There's just things that are starting to break. It's going to need extensive work. And again, they've been in the ground for thirty years, beyond, uh, three years beyond its life expectancy. So they are due to be replaced, um, and our hope is to continue with our, our fuel service for our fleet and, uh, move to above-ground tanks.
Two tanks, one diesel and one gasoline or?
Yeah, one unleaded, one diesel.
Eight thousand dollar, eight thousand gallon tank that's underground, was that also divided in?
It is. It's one tank that's got a divider in it, so it's a six thousand gallon unleaded, two thousand gallon diesel.
So part of the hundred and forty thousand dollar cost was a hundred thousand dollars for the tanks, but forty thousand dollars to remove the old underground. Is it possible just to, like, fill with concrete and not remove it?
No, we asked.
Okay.
Eagle, they asked Eagle and Eagle said, uh, we have to.
I see. Thank you.
This is regulated by the state police, isn't it, the environmental department?
Well, they have oversight and compliance requirements, yes. Eagle does.
The only beneficiaries of this would be us and the Gross Pointe School System, right?
Correct.
I, I have a question just in retrospect. The two bids were very similar. Um, but there are substantial what-ifs notes at the end for the owl or the Larson. And I don't know if you're apples to apples, were they the same, were they more substantial, or the other company, were they, you know, willing to do more?
They were, they were.
For, you know, five hundred or five thousand dollars more. That, that's just my concern anyway. Yeah.
No, it's, uh, it's valid questions. Um, I.
I just wanted.
I, I have two comments. One, I gave, Oscar Larson has been taking care of our tanks since we put them in and buy the tanks before that. They're our preferred vendor. Um, I got a quote from them first, and I actually erased the numbers off of it, gave it to Mercer and told them to give me a price.
Okay.
Um, so it is an apples-to-apples, uh, uh, match. Uh, I have a great relationship with Oscar Larson. If you have any issues, the state does too. I, they're basically the only, uh, job in town when it comes to these. Mercer's more either downriver or even Ohio, Indiana company. Um, and then, um.
Do they inspect it when it comes out of the ground to make sure there was no leakage?
They'll inspect the ground. They actually test the dirt. That's why I don't have a do-not-exceed price on here, because there are unknowns. Um, we are required to test the soil when we remove it, and I think remove, no, it's like we, we need to remove the soil until they find a certain threshold.
So that's a phase two study, right, environmental?
They, they do it all at the same time. They got a whole system down. It's all done.
Larson?
Oscar Larson.
And so just to continue on the area that's going to have to be cleared prior to them doing this, who's going to undertake that and how much is that going to run? Do you, do you expect?
It's all excavated and filled in. There's concrete that's in the quote and everything. So it is a start-to-finish job.
So they're going to do all of that?
Yes.
That's part of this, right?
Yeah.
It, it's just confusing because the above price does not include, and then the bullet points on all of those things.
Down the.
But those things will be included.
Yes, scrap, scrap area for new six-inch reinforced concrete, drill, pin, pour, and finish new concrete in affected areas matching existing grades.
And would it be possible, I'm trying to imagine to the bottom if you can, so we have less than two inches of residual on the day?
Absolutely. Yeah. Oh, yeah, they'll do that. Yep.
Did they give you a time interval for expectation of the project and what will you do during, during that time when you can't use a?
Yes. While they're working on it, um, we do have an, at least we used to have an account at Mobile where we can go and, and fill up our gas tanks temporarily while they're doing it. Uh, they said they probably won't be able to start on this until December or January. Um, but they want to get a bid price down. They'll actually buy the tanks now to lock in our places. Um, and then when their schedule opens up, they'll come and do it, most likely all.
So you could even get a fire truck into Mobile and get gas there without an overhead obstruction?
Yeah, yeah. If we have to find a location or even ask another city, there's other cities who will help us out. Every city has their own tanks. Also, they're above ground now. So I'm sure we can partner up with the farms, let's do the part for, for help.
Yeah, then I have one last question. How old is those existing, uh, underground?
It was installed in nineteen ninety-one.
Yep.
What, what is, my public schools?
They fill up, they fill up their tanks here, so we, we charge them, um, what we pay plus a small premium. Um, and they fill up all their vehicles that are fuel box.
And that's, they've been doing that for, before I started.
Yeah.
So all their buses and?
Not buses.
No, not buses. No, just their.
I don't think they have buses.
Public vehicles.
And library and the school, both. They pull up their vehicles here forever and we, they, we. They'll, they'll.
Yeah, if you go further, you say have a separate key card that lets us know exactly how many gallons they use. We average what the price of that gas was, plus add an administrative fee and they reverse it. Approximately twenty percent of your gas purchases go to the schools and library. And eighty, a little over eighty percent is for the community itself.
Mostly regular gas, not diesel, right?
Yes, for the schools.
Mostly, but they do, they do use some diesel. They have some diesel equipment. Yeah. It's not a nuisance. They're here a couple of times a week. They know when to come, basically when we're not around. And I see him because I'm in the office, but I think it's a good partnership that we have.
From, uh, the, the time of excavation to environmental mitigation to installation, how much time do you think are we estimating before we can pump some gas on our?
Great, great question. I don't have an answer to, but God, I can't believe, they do this all the time, so I can't imagine it'd take more than a month.
It could be a month-long project?
Uh, if there's a lot, if there's a lot of issues.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think there's going to be a lot of issues. We're not leaking fuel. Um, so it is a double-walled tank, uh, which is modern. Uh, it's not an old.
But if the ground becomes hot because of toxins, then what?
Then you just keep excavating until you get to the fire, right? Yeah, eventually you get clay and it doesn't get through the clay, which I don't think is too deep around here, so. Uh, I, I can ask, uh, but I don't expect it will be too long.
Are you comfortable you have a price not to exceed just as one forty-four, five twenty?
Right, I didn't put a not to exceed because of the questions that you guys have raised. We just don't know how much dirt they're going to have.
So we might have to amend it in the future?
We, we might.
Is, is the only real cost variable the environmental mitigation?
Yes.
Everything else is locked in?
Pretty much, yep.
Okay. Well, I look for a motion for the purchase of, uh, of the, from Oscar Larson Company. Is there a motion?
Make the motion that we approve the, uh, Oscar Larson bid at to exceed.
Well, do I'm saying four hundred and forty-four, five twenty? Five twenty-five.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? If not all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I think, thank you very much.
The last item in new business is the pool project design proposal.
Mayor, yes, at the last meeting, I, uh, distributed copies of this to, uh, members of the council and asked them to review it for any questions that you may have. Starting going forward, getting the next phase two of our project completed, which would be, uh, there are, um, in detail in the estimate, the design phase, the development phase, uh, design development, uh, deliverables, the construction documents, and the bidding activity, uh, impairments and construction administration. Uh. Uh, I think we talked about it at the last meeting. This is a company that we used for phase one. Paid them a whole over twenty-five thousand dollars for phase one. Agreed that when we talked about phase one, that if we use them for phase two, we would, uh, see the credit, uh, for that half of that, for what we paid in, in the first phase. Really, we'd have to start all over if we decided to go somewhere else. Um, I did compare, again, once again, they use state bid pricing for calculating their fees. We, I did talk with the farms and compared fees. Uh, we're, we're in good shape on our fees when it, when it comes to that. Um, and this, uh, they would start, this would take approximately about six months to complete, uh, this to be done. Again, if, um, we anticipate moving forward with the project, uh, we want to get this going because nothing else can be done for this, this portion. Uh, this design would be working off of the current configuration. However, uh, part of this process is meeting with council, meeting with staff, meeting with everyone along the way. And before, as they're designing, if there are any changes, those changes will come in during that process. So if, if, if we decided that, you know, we want, you know, to have a separate option for a second floor or, you know, those type of things, those would all be done in that, during that process. And that pricing would come in separately, however, we tell them obviously, uh, to do.
We're not locking in the design at this point?
Well, we, we, we're working off the existing.
But we're not being held to.
That's correct. We, we, as we move through the process, they want, you know, you may, as you're going through the process, that we may have put something in this original design that we say, and now that we're looking at it, that doesn't work for us. Or we've changed our mind. We'd like to do something a little different, but they're adaptable. So you, you can, as these, and we'll be having, uh, meetings, and as you read of their proposal, they talk about that in there, where those, where that will take place, uh, with all stakeholders.
I raised a question. There's a thing that's two weeks ago in the paper, it talked about the farms project. It sounded like a later in the process of that, they decided to get away from the wave pool that we have and go back to a traditional kids' splash pad.
Little different, so a little, little different. So they were, what they were having was a full-size lazy river. We're, we just, we're not having a lazy river. What we have is just that, is this, this pool for elevated, that type. So we're, we're not having the same thing. Uh, they also wanted a separate, or I mean, a combined splash pad and a combined, uh, I mean, a, a combined splash pad baby pool. They, there was some resistance to that, but I don't know that that decision's been made now. They did, they are going to kind of rethink the lazy river because they have much, you know, people that weren't happy with that, that they're probably changing that.
Going back to it?
No, going away from it, going away from it. That appears to be it, but they're going to put that money somewhere else in something else. And so they're going to change, but so like, once again, you know, as we move through this process, there may be some need to change or, you know, different opinions. And we'll deal with that as we go along.
Uh, sorry, the total, this is the total price document for phase two.
Ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five.
A maximum of ninety-five, so, uh, it may reduce, because we may do a design build.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably likely that, you know, where you lock in your prices, which maybe the way we'll go. Uh, again, that'll be a, you know, as we move along, we'll be making those decisions. Uh, and so that number could come down because then it's a percentage of, you know, there's, there's some different things that will change the price. That's a max. And, but.
So the ninety-five thousand dollars is used for the design of the pool and the building, right?
That, that's the pool, the building, all the electric, everything.
I just wonder, since we have, we all have this preparation, whether the funds can be achieved for both the building and pool. Just wondering if they might be able to break down the ninety-five thousand dollar price into pool and building and maybe go ahead with the pool portion of the design and do the building portion, but I don't know. And it's, if, especially if it's thirty thousand dollars designed for the pool and sixty-five thousand dollars for the building, we may waste that sixty-five thousand dollar cost if we don't proceed with the building.
Because we can't, with, with the current, with the pool that we're looking at, you can't, the footprint, you're going to have to take the building down. So we know we have to build a building and a pool. So we know that has to be done now, whether, the only really question that we might have is whether you do a second-story community. That, that's pretty much, we have to have, we, we, we're going to have to have a new bathhouse and the pool. We know those are two that, so along the way, we can decide whether we want to do a second story or not, and that will, that will make some difference. And, and maybe eliminating that, if it was early in the process, might reduce it. Again, that's going to be a conversation that we need to clear.
So just to be clear, the fifty percent credit back is for phase one?
Correct.
And then they did the math and then we come to ninety-five thousand?
No, I, I.
Or is that going to come off in ninety-five?
I think that's going to come off in ninety-five.
Okay. I just, that's, that's, I'm, we're reasonable.
Steve, I had a couple of calls and that's what residents were focused on. They want to know what the cost for the product amount for the community building.
Well, see, that's, that's what, this is one of the things they're going to have to do. I mean, again, until you decide what you want to do and, and that, like I said, we're going currently, we're, they're planning on doing what we've designed for fa, in phase one. So that's what they're projecting this cost to be, to, to do the drawings and get the bids and come up with estimates and all those costs and mental distance. And once again, I, I think I said this at the last meeting, but, uh, so we won't be, this funding won't come out of general fund money at all. This will be coming from capital improvement because this is interest that we got off the original donation. I, I think I talked to Daley, we're probably at around eighty thousand in interest roughly. And so that'll be covering pretty much the wash on this, and so we'll have to use any general fund money for it.
Well, how does everybody feel? Any questions? We need a new pool, you know, I mean, and we need a new, um, well, no. Yeah, I mean.
It's just a question of how we need everything.
Mm-hmm, pretty much. Right?
But second floor, it would be substantial savings or bonus, just depends on, right?
Well, if you don't do it, you know, is it something you anticipate, put the footing in so that you can do it at a later time?
Well, you know, I, I mean, my, I'm only, I'm just only saying, my opinion, it's only going up from that price, you know, and, and then you have.
The best price you'll ever get.
It's the best price you're ever going to get for it if you're going to do it. And then next of all, can you imagine having to stop the construction again on a second?
And I worry whether or not the soil could support it, you know?
Well, that's one of the things that they'll do in there, and that's part of their responsibility to make sure all that, you know, that's all doable.
Well, Steve, what are you looking for today?
Just approval to go ahead with the contract and have them start. They said it'd take them four weeks, uh, to get going, once we get a contract back to them.
And they'll give us the breakouts of the cost and?
Yes.
Definitely. Okay. Well, I, I look for a motion to approve the phase two study.
So I move to adopt the August eighteen, twenty twenty-five contract that's been presented to the city council.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all of us in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, public comment? We have any public comment? It's not a council comment. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Courtney. Can't wait for it. Before the, the qualifications seem outstanding, and so I think, I think, uh, city manager made a great choice and the council, so welcome aboard. Yeah, uh, Mike, well, thanks for, uh, uh, taking the bull by the horn and doing all the technical work. I'm sure residents don't realize, but you're, still set as the major city, right? That's pretty much, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. John?
I'll say it again, Courtney, welcome aboard. I think you jumped in with both feet, uh, a couple of years ago. You're well up to your eyeballs at this point. I think you're not submerged with this next role, but, uh, we're, we're happy to have you aboard, especially with the election season rolling around. Just like to, um, reiterate, iterate what Rob said. Next Thursday night should be a great event. I know my wife and I will be attending. Uh, we look forward to it. We've gone to, I think, the past, I don't know, four or five, before I got on city council. It's a great event. It's a great way to see your neighbors in a fun event, in a fun environment. I'm looking forward to seeing what Lockmore does. It's a great environment. Looks like it's going to be a perfect night. Um, maybe go steal a golf cart and drive around. But I, I encourage everyone to attend that event, and, um, I'm sure we'll be having a few discussions about the pool there. What better way to talk about a pool than with a really nice German beverage in your hand and a really impressive one in your luggage? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yeah, y'all?
I just want to thank everybody that made this meeting possible. It's very concise. Everybody that showed up, every committee person that they had to offer. Very insightful, very well done. Very insightful, very well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. John?
Just a special thanks to Ted Tullitworth, his diligence and ultimate work with what he does. He covers every single event we have. His, his coverage on the swim team this summer was phenomenal, of all the events we do, and the, the presentation he gave spent so many, so thank you for doing that. I would recommend doing that as well.
Thank you, Ben. It's hard to believe it's the end of summer. I mean, the summer that we had. I'm still in the afterglow for the swim team. Just amazing when you think about it. It's Ted, yeah, I know, sharks. The smallest team of, of the six cities, the smallest team in a league that's been together for over fifty-five, sixty years, goes back almost as old as I. And, and they come in first place, and it's just ninety-three swimmers strong, and we edged out Grosse Pointe once. They had over two hundred and twenty-five swimmers. I mean, just like, but, and we have a new coach. We have, the thing is with the coach, you got to make it fun for the people that are, just want to do it for fun. Then there's other stu, other athletes that swim all year round, and you got to make it competitive with them. That's a really delicate balance. And our new coach, and, you know, and our prior coach too, he did a nice job of weaving a path for both, both types of swimmers. I mean, again, the chess tournament, Ted was over there. I mean, we had, we had a new player, Frank Denopoulos, who actually had three children, were on the swim team, and all three scored and got points. But he was in the semifinal match with Ken George, and it took over an hour and twenty minutes before he finally conceded, but what a, it was a great spirited match, and unfortunately, our, our top dog, our, our grandmaster, Jonathan Lurie, won, and again, another hour match with Ken, Ken George. Jonathan is probably one of the best players in Grosse Pointe, and it's just, I've had a couple of people call me, and they said, is that kid coming back? Is he going to be there? And, I mean, they, they wanted a chance to win. There was a doctor who had called and said, do you still have that wringer, that kid? Because he looks like he's like nineteen years old, and, but Jonathan did a wonderful job, and again, he's our grandmaster. And Ken George, I always think of Ken George, because when he was a little boy, he watched Bobby Fischer, the greatest chess player in the world play. So, I mean, it was, he's never forgotten that. In Washington Square Plaza, in Forty-second Street in Manhattan, he, he said, it was just unbelievable to see. I'd like to say, well, some sad news. Ted D touched all the communities in Grosse Pointe. I mean, he lived in Grosse Pointe once, I believe, but he touched all the Grosse Pointes, and, I mean, his accolades go on for two pages. I, I know through the Detroit Goodfellas, he was Goodfellow of the Year, but he was, he had his footprint in everything around here, not just Grosse Pointe, but in the metropolitan Detroit area, so what a great leader that we lost. He was eighty-nine years old, but had a great life, and his life was about serving the community, giving back to the community. Like, most of the people here, like Rob, you're giving back, you know, Ted, you're giving back, Scott's soon to be given back, and they have to. So, I mean, that's what makes this meeting so special. Steve and I met with the Grosse Pointe yacht club with the general manager. We had some issues. One of the issues, we shared the cost of a harvest crew. I think it cost originally twenty-eight thousand dollars. Our share was fourteen thousand, and they stored it for us, and they operate the equipment because it requires some, some special, but that's why our, we, our LJ and our seaweed's been under control, because the yacht club works in partnership with Grosse Pointe shores to make sure that we also have a pleasant arena experience for our bowlers. I want to thank Don again, not only has he handled the pickleball tournament, both pickleball tournaments, and have nice prizes, of pickles for almost anybody in all places, but then he also handles the tennis tournament. It's just, it's nice when I come here, the board's all prepared, it's got people all energized, all ready to go. Don, thank you. He's our overall commissioner for all our courts outside, so thank you again, Don. And, and Ted, I don't, I, I guess I have to say it again, that was very moving. It's just like you could hear a pin drop. Nobody, everybody was just watching that. I mean, out of the sadness of moments, the frailties of human emotion come to the forefront, and thank you for capturing that. Well, our next meeting is October twenty-first. I need a motion to adjourn, so.
Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.